I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council of May 18, 2009, to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Bowersox.
Here.
Garrick. Lewis.
Here.
Marlin.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Stevenson. Mayor Pro Tim Smythe.
Here.
We have three sets of meetings, minutes from previous meetings, February 27, May 4, May 11. Do I hear motion?
No. Second.
Moved by Robert Lewis, second by Dennis Roberts. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Petitions and communications. We have four cards, I believe they're all related to the same issue, and since we were aware that you were coming tonight, we've also agreed that we would, we will take this up at our June 8 committee meeting, following budget hearings, which will occur the next two meetings. So we'd ask that the four of you that wish to speak sort of summarize, and especially work in the questions that we need to work on between now and June 8 to bring to committee. So first up is Danielle Chenoweth, then Neil Parthen, Beldon Fields, and then Daryl Cruz.
Thank you, and good evening. My name's Danielle Chenoweth, I live at 412 West Illinois Street, just down the street here, and I'm here to talk to you all about housing. Hi, nice to see you all. So, housing's really important, right? Because we're facing a recession, and we're seeing at least 1,000, the last time I counted, from the News Gazette reports, of people laid off in our community, and of course, everyone's being pinched, and we have foreclosures happening across the nation, but we have them here happening as well. And so as this squeeze happens on people's income and their housing situation, we're seeing some of the consequences of that squeeze. And I think the question that we, as a community, and by that I mean the whole county, not just, not just Urbana, but also Urbana-Champaign, Rantoul, Savoy, and their surrounding areas, we need to have a conversation about how we're going to respond to some of the things that are popping up, and what, what is the role of government in helping to, to respond to the housing crisis as we see it. So as you all probably know, from the papers, there was a place called Gateway Studios in Champagne, North Champagne, which was a motel that had been converted into a place where some people have been living there for over a year. So it was, you know, somewhat permanent housing for a number of folks, about 100 units, and the landlord wasn't paying the utilities, although he was collecting the utilities. He became at least $44,000 behind in utility payments, and the city, and essentially the power was cut off. The city then came in to condemn, and we saw instant homelessness. And by instant, I mean the residents found out Friday, and the power was cut off on Tuesday. And these are folks who are living paycheck to paycheck. I was one of the members of CU Citizens for Peace and Justice that went out on Sunday, on Mother's Day, just to ask people, what is going on? And I knocked on doors up at Gateway and talked to folks, and I found 15 children and about 20 adults, all of whom were left over, essentially, saying, "I have no place to go." So I was told they're going to live in the forest, they're going to live in their cars. These are people who don't have family connections here locally, and didn't have friends to stay with, and didn't have, were waiting for their next paycheck to move into a place. So, this kind of thing shouldn't happen, and I do think there's a public role here to, to in some ways, hold the, the feet to the fire of the landlord in this case, who actively created a situation in which condemnation happened. We also had a situation up just days after the Gateway Studios case, with Autumn Glenn Apartments, 180-unit apartment building in Rantoul. They had a bit more time to relocate, but when you see, especially with affordable housing, and people are squeezed out of a place that's 180 units, where exactly can they go? Is that place equally affordable? And is it right that they have to leave? Their kids have to move school districts, they have to experience disruption, because they were paying the utility bills, but the landlord was not taking, paying the utility bills. So this is briefly, for the public to understand, that's an illustration of one of the problems with housing that we're going to face. And so, we are going, CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, the Catholic Worker House, some of the volunteers at the Times Center, a group of people who have been meeting called the People's Housing Authority, have been having a conversation about, what are we going to do as a community to respond to this, this crisis? And so we bring to you a proposal, and that proposal, there's a couple of specific proposals, and we have a question, series of questions, and we thought that maybe we could have a conversation sometime soon during a committee of the whole meeting. I understand that a council meeting is tonight. And Charlie has volunteered, perhaps June 8 would be a good time for that. So you can discuss with staff and see if that's appropriate. But, I guess the, we have two specific proposals for you to consider, and if my printer was acting right, I would have copies, but I'm going to email you these things. So the proposals are, one is a relocation assistance ordinance. This relocation assistance ordinance, we could begin as a starting point, the Relocation Assistance Act, House Bill 7150, that Naomi Jacobson was a chief cosponsor on. It was introduced on February of last year, and it passed out of committee, but kind of got out of the House and Urban Development Committee on a 5-2-1 vote, but it got stuck in Rules Committee, and then with the legislative session, it died. We do have a meeting with Naomi Jacobson's office that will be after the council meeting. It's mid-June, we'll be talking to her, to see if we can support her on the state level. Meantime, I don't think we can wait, and also, we're not sure if that legislation's going to move, and we see many times, with anti-discrimination ordinances, et cetera, that Urbana will take the lead and the state follows. So I think it's okay for us to move forward on something like this. Essentially, what this ordinance could say, would say, is something that if the city notifies that a dwelling unit will be condemned, or will be unlawful to occupy due to conditions that violate the applicable codes, then essentially, and the tenant was not the one that caused the condemnation, it's the landlord who caused the condemnation, that essentially the landlord would pay relocation assistance. And we can talk about how much that would be and what would be appropriate. The state was suggesting $2,000, the state bill, $2,000 or three times monthly rent, whichever is greater, in addition to a deposit in the interest that is due. Then essentially, the landlord would be given a period of time, of say, seven days in the case of the state law, that says you, you need to pay for relocation of these residents. And then if the landlord didn't pay, as is, I think would be the case with both Gateway and Autumn Glenn in the immediate sense, because both of them were dealing with financial solvency issues, that the city would advance payment, so that the folks were able to fill that gap. And then the city would essentially assess a civil penalty, a per-day civil penalty against the landlord for each tenant, until the landlord reimburses the city. Then of course, you could look at putting a lien on a property, et cetera. So, you know, landlords need to know that if, we want you to do business in the city, it's a great place to do business here. In fact, the rental, you can make quite a bit of money in Champagne, Urbana, being a landlord. But you can't let your property, you can't not pay the bills, and you can't let your property go down, you have to do something about that. So essentially, that's what we like to see. So that's the first thing. The second thing, we like to see, and this is kind of a question, I don't think that the rental registration program includes motels that are being used as long-term housing. But I'm not positive, and this would be a question for Seth. Libby's shaking her head, no. This might be a loophole we want to close in rental, in the rental registration program. Because for example, Ameren said, Ameren by state law is required to give tenants, not just the landlord, 10 days' notice. And in the Gateway situation, they gave four days' notice. Well, state law says it's 10, 10 days, what happened here? Well, Ameren's attorneys say, and I would debate this with them, if, and if it had been Urbana, I would hope our attorneys would have debated it, said, "Oh, no, we're not a landlord, we're a motel." Because look, we look like a motel, right? So we're a motel. Well, actually, there are people that are paying by the week, by the month, people have been there for over a year. It's not a motel at that point. So I think that that's a piece that we're going to have to, a gray area, we're going to have to take care of. A couple of questions I think you all and staff should think about is, on the financial piece with the relocation assistance, is there a way to make this a break-even proposition for the city? For example, if we advance payment, some cases landlords will pay back right away, other cases, they may be assessed fines. Perhaps those fines could help cover the costs of landlords where you're not able, you take them to court and you're not able to recoup the full cost. If we can't recoup the full cost, where could those monies come from? Is this the kind of thing, is this kind of housing relocation appropriate for CDBG funds or, or some of our home funds, which is something we could look into? Also, I think maybe to ask your attorney, if the landlord is bank, is going bankrupt or claiming bankruptcy, what can you do to collect? How hard is it going to be to collect? Where would the city be in the line to collect, et cetera? These are some of the, the questions that we have. I really appreciate your time. I think of Urbana as a, as a city with a big heart, as Joe Whalen used to always say when he, when he said in the word succeed. I think it's important for us to notice that tenants are really being gouged with the current situation, and that the government has a role to play to fill this gap, so that we don't see innocent people who are paying their bills, essentially facing homelessness or being relocated at Humnen without, you know, without advance notice, et cetera, and without support. Thank you.
Questions for Danielle. I have a quick one for you, Danielle. Did anybody ever answer the question of why Gateway was allowed to go $44,000 in debt with Ameren? You know, why that didn't come up sooner?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Daryl might, when he gets up here, maybe he has an answer. Okay.
But a, but a good thing to notice is, you know, perhaps the city needs to really identify vulnerable properties, which I think we do somewhat, and to begin to kind of track those properties and see, you know, and to see where they may be at in the picture. The other thing, and this is of course the big picture thing, is we need more affordable housing. If we're going to relocate people, we need a place to relocate them to. How are we going to make sure we have sufficient affordable housing? But that's kind of stage two of this conversation.
Well, Wednesday morning is groundbreaking on North Broadway, so.
Wonderful.
I guess a question too, the one thing that you do raise and mention was possible lien on the property.
Yes.
That's one of the, the issues. Okay, next up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Next up, Neil Parthen. Am I pronouncing your last name correctly?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
To few, the proud, the people that can. My name's Neil Parthen, I live at 705 East Colorado, Apartment 105 in Urbana, and I'm here tonight to further suggest the city of Urbana begin crafting an ordinance for tenant relocation assistance. Urbana has frequently taken the input of community organizations and concerned citizens to craft forward-thinking policies and ideas, and I hope that this is one of those occasions where Urbana is able to take a lead and be proactive on a very important issue, and I very much appreciate the receptive attitude that we've received so far. Homelessness is an issue that's had intense spotlight shown upon it due to the recent removal of tenants at Gateway Studios in Champagne and Autumn Glenn Apartments in Rantoul. In both cases, many tenants had been dutifully paying their rent, but the landlords had chosen not to make the utility payments. And with the recent rising unemployment and job layoffs, this is only going to continue its tragic growth, not only in our local community, but across the nation. Danielle focused on the details of our request, and I'm going to focus on the impact, because the condemnation of Autumn Glenn has actually had an impact on me personally. For those of you that don't know, I teach junior high social studies in Rantoul. And in March, Autumn Glenn's landlord, a California company called Evergreen Property Management, had failed to pay the power bill for some time, after accepting money from residents as part of their rent to pay the utility. The landlord was notified multiple times that their non-payment would cause the electricity to be turned off, and people would be removed from their homes. The only notification that the tenants got was when the municipally-owned electric company posted notices of removal on their doors for non-payment. Fortunately, through community pressure and mobilization, these people were able to stay in their homes. I was able to make a couple of trips there to assist families as best as I could, listen to their stories, and express my solidarity. On May 7, Autumn Glenn came in the news again after the landlord got behind in paying multiple bills. On my most recent visit to Autumn Glenn, which was Saturday, garbage was overflowing out of the dumpsters and into the parking lot, because the landlord never paid the trash collectors. The grass was almost knee-high at certain parts, because lawn care bills are still unpaid. The power bill remained unpaid, and Nycor turned the gas off last Wednesday. Water's going off next. The residents have been ordered to leave by May 27, after already paying their rent for May. Residents like Aura Boykins, who told me I was able to use her name, and was quite fervent about using her name, the mother of a student that I taught last year, who dutifully paid her rent, are now being punished and under significant economic strain due to the fault of the landlord. In the two-hour conversation I had with Ms. Boykins on Saturday, who's still at Autumn Glenn despite the gas turn-off, she expressed the difficulties some of her other residents have had in finding new housing. Her own difficulties of being on a limited income, a Section 8 housing voucher recipient, having a serious medical condition which requires hospitalization frequently, and not wanting to leave her home that she's had for the last 15 years. She wanted to know too, how the landlord could get so far behind in their bills, and not be called out on it earlier to protect tenants. She even stated that tenants are not only being removed from their homes, but they're not even able to get their deposits back. As she remarked, quote, "These people were the caretakers of my home." Well, they certainly did take it. Fortunately, she has been able to find potential permanent housing, if all goes well at the end of this week. Another student this morning walked up to me and told me that, "Well, it looks like we're going to have to go back to the hotel," because her family hasn't been fortunate enough to find affordable housing in this situation. These families, amongst many others, just this afternoon before I left work, a letter that I had mailed out for National Junior Honor Society to a student's family was returned, because they had moved from Autumn Glenn. These families should not be punished for the actions of the landlord, and the landlord needs to be held accountable in these types of situations. If I was to take money for one thing from any person in here, and then used it on something else, you'd be talking to me from jail. While Gateway may have occurred in Champagne, and Autumn Glenn may have occurred in Rantoul, we're in the process of presenting these to all the local communities, to ensure that this sort of injustice doesn't take, take place anywhere again, in hopes that Urbana can be proactive, instead of having to be unfortunately reactive.
Questions for Neil. Thank you. Beldon?
Should I give my name and address, or is this informal? Okay. Thank you for listening to us on this. I too belong to CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, and something we've called the People's Housing Authority. And what we have been trying to do now for several months, since we constituted ourselves, before this ever came up, was try to find ways that the cities, and possibly the county housing authority, and regional planning of the county, could find ways to increase the availability of low-income housing. We had thinking, been thinking about the construction of new structures, we had been thinking about, since in Champagne alone, there's something like 40 buildings that are sitting vacant, maybe using some of these existing structures. We've always encountered the downsides of these. There isn't enough parking in this one, we know that the city of Champagne doesn't like low-income housing near the downtown area. There are always reasons why it seems the communities are able to avoid the problem. This was very frustrating, but it became even more frustrating, I think, for us when we were presented with the actual situations of Autumn Glenn and Gateway. And there's some similarities that I think put a human face on this, or an inhuman face on this. In both of these cases, the deadbeats who did not pay the utilities were corporations based in California. In both cases, the people who were affected were low-income people. I did not go out to Autumn Glenn, but I did go to Gateway, and I interviewed, and we have tapes of some of these interviews, a number of people. The commonalities there were one, I only found one person that we talked to in Gateway that was not African-American. These are basically African-American populations who have been affected in both of these cases. The second thing, in regard to the Gateway people that I talked to, was all of them were working. They were working people. They had full-time jobs. But they didn't make enough money to afford anything other than the $600 rent that they paid monthly, some as Danielle said, some paid monthly, some paid weekly. It was cheaper if you paid monthly the $600 than if you paid weekly. I talked to one woman, and Danielle also talked with her, who worked at a Comfort Inn. She, I think, was housekeeping. I said, "Well, you know, couldn't Comfort Inn give you some accommodation? They don't give any discounts. I can't afford to live in the Comfort Inn." Some people who had marginally more, very marginally, were able to find apparently a room at Value Inn. But the person I talked to who worked at Comfort Inn said, "I don't have enough money at Value Inn." Secondly, she said, "I don't have the deposit." It wasn't just a matter of the rent, but a huge obstacle was the deposit. So I said to her what I had been told, which was, "You can go to Regional Planning Commission, and they will give you a one-time $150 check." She said, "I went to Regional Planning Commission, they told me I don't make enough money. I couldn't get it." So what I, what I'm trying to convey here is that we have people who are working full-time, we have an enormous problem of low-wage work in this community. People are working full-time, and they're not making enough money to sustain themselves. And it's not just people working in places like Comfort Inn. I talked to one guy who was a certified nursing assistant at Coward Clinic. He didn't have enough. He was so disgusted and frustrated, he's, "I'm going back down south, I don't even care about the deposit that they owe me, I just want to get out of here, I can't make it in this community." And that, it is true that this is not a motel, this is, this has been operated, that's why they call it studio. But all these people had there was a microwave to cook, they had no other things to cook with, and yet they're paying for this one room, and in some cases, there were four or five people in a room, and they were being charged $600 a month for this. So, I think we need to think about what's happening in our community. I think that it's coming to the fore as we enter this very, very horrible economic situation, which is only going to deepen, it's not going to get better, it's only going to deepen. But, we haven't recognized some of the problems in our community that have been going on all along. Thank you.
Questions for Beldon?
Yes, fine. Mr. Lewis.
How many persons are we really talking about, community-wide?
Community-wide, I can't tell you how many, because we're not talking about homelessness. There is a census of people who are homeless, but I don't know how many people are living in such marginal and vulnerable conditions in this community. I mean, I've learned a lot recently, for example, I didn't know Salvation Army was putting up people at Motel 6, out on Cunningham. I didn't know that until I went to the last meeting of the service providers for the homeless, that this was occurring. So it's not only that we have people who are homeless, who live in shelters, and sleep in their cars, and sleep in their trunk, in their trucks, but we also have people living in things like, you know, Gateway and other motels, which I would not call a dignified way to live, particularly for a family of four or five people, but at least it's a roof over the head maybe, until perhaps governments, local governments, will assume responsibility to provide much more adequate housing for low-income people, as well as for people who are presently homeless.
Anyone else? Thanks.
Thank you.
And finally, Daryl Cruz, 2007, South George Huff.
Good evening, and thank you for your attention to this particular issue. I'll try not to repeat anything that's already been said, but just kind of highlight some other bits of information that I have and collected during the past week. I'd like to begin a little bit with a discussion of Ameren, because after the article hit the paper, I called Ameren, and after going through about a 45-minute voicemail circuitry, I finally had Lee Morris call me back, who's a public relations gentleman for Ameren. So we had a very interesting conversation. And basically, what, in summary of that conversation, was I asked him, "Can you extend it, since the residents were only informed on Thursday at 3:00, a few more days?" Like, give them a 10-day notice. And he said, "We definitely cannot do it, because if we would do that beyond the date on Tuesday, they would have to begin their legal process again, of filing papers and documenting the process of when it is being shut off," and they've gone through that legal process, and that to extend that date would require them to restart that process again, whatever that means. And asking him, "Well, why was it done at this point in time?" And he said, "Well, we couldn't do it any earlier, because there's law against doing it in the winter, when the weather's cold, and so this is the earliest date we were able to legally be able to accomplish getting the power turned off." And he says, "Just imagine if we had done this in July, when it was really hot, how people would be screaming." So this is the best time for us to turn the power off, because it's in the spring. And so, in asking him the question once again, about is there anything that can be done from Ameren's standpoint, in terms of the statute with regards to rental units, you know, there's a 10-day notice, and quote, Mr. Morris said to me, "We're not a social services outfit." Period. And we have no interest in being a social services outfit, which I understand. And so I kind of like to characterize Ameren as a legal-conscious business, and not a socially-conscious business, because I guess my question to Ameren would have been, since they had told Gateway Suites that they were going to shut the power off, and let the responsibility be with Gateway Suites, certainly being a community business, if they wanted to, they could have posted 10 days ahead regardless of whether it was a hotel or a rental property, to let people know if they had interest in those people's welfare. Now, the people's welfare, I think, is, is of what is utmost concern here. And I would like to approach this for the fact that this is not an isolated event, in talking to some of the residents as they moved, a number of them were placed at Hanover Hotel, out here in Urbana, I think Manor Inn, or Manor, there's a Manor Hotel, a number of them went there. Some of them have kids, that probably transferred to the school district. And the expectation, this, these were single mothers with four or five kids, four kids, I know at least two situations where they had four kids packing up and moving. And anybody who would have been out there on Monday would have seen suburban, suburban stacked up, maybe a pickup truck, and you would see them carrying out a upholstered chair, a TV set, 20 boxes of all their possessions that they've had in their room in the hotel. In other words, these were not hotel residents, even though it was. They had many of their possessions, belongings and furniture were there. And they had to find a means to be able to load those things up and move them out. It wasn't just getting in a car and carrying your suitcase, it was gathering your things up, okay? So, that's an issue in terms of transitional, temporary housing, the thing that goes along with that. The other thing, I think Champagne Neighborhood Services, Kevin Jackson was in charge of it, and after the event had concluded, he said, "You know, we really need to stop and review what occurred, and how we were able to respond, and how we were able to work with United Way, work with regional planning, work with our nonprofit, our nonprofit organizations in the community. It did not work as well as it should have. There were problems in communication and responding to the needs that existed there." And to give you an example, there was a gentleman who came from, home from work on Monday, when I went back out there, and asked him if he had got any assistance, and I think United Way put up $2,000 to help, I think families got $200, and individuals got $100. And the money got distributed, and some people were at work, and they got home, and they asked, and there was no money left. There was no financial assistance for some. It was just very poorly organized and communicated. Some got assistance, some did not, some got financial help, some did not. Some were wondering, "Why didn't I get any? How come I got left out? There's no more money here to help me." I mean, it really was kind of a chaotic sort of emptying of the building, assistance that was given. So one of the things I would like to suggest to, to consider possibly, is as we go to So one of the things I would like to suggest to consider possibly is, as we go to the Champagne City Council and Rantoul City Council, we'd like to ask them to consider, and especially Neighborhood Services or Community Development here, possibly just hosting an exploratory meeting between the cities and communities in Champagne County to see how we, you might, we might collectively be able to respond to this more effectively instead of in isolation, because all the communities are affected, and the resources that come to bear generally are resources that exist between the communities, through Regional Planning, through United Way, or through cities. Maybe there's some way the cities can work cooperatively to be a little bit more effective in responding to this. And if that invitation should come to Urbana, I hope Urbana would at least be willing to send a staff member or somebody to possibly participate in that dialogue. Thank you.
Questions? Robert Lewis?
Yes.
Has anyone given any thought to what immediate action should be taken to address the concerns of those families? I mean, I appreciate the collective gathering and trying to organize how it's going to be done, but that's going to take time. But you have immediate issues presently. Is there any organization that you've run across, or has any kind of clue as to how to get this job done quickly?
I don't know. But in terms of the need or the issue or the immediate, it seemed like everybody took a sigh of relief on Tuesday, and they chained Gateway Suites. They said, "We found housing or a place for everybody to sleep for the night or the next week," and everybody just felt really we accomplished it. But I know a great percentage of those people, they are encountering that same problem again tonight that they encountered a week ago, because they were living week by week. And to be able to know what their needs are, to stay in touch and communication with them or find them or locate them is extremely difficult. We know they're there. They live in a community. And I don't have a good answer, other than I know, you know, if you don't see it, you don't hear it, you don't think it exists. But when a Gateway Suites surfaces or bubbles up into the public, I then all of a sudden, "Oh, there are those people out in our community that are right on the fringe of being able to survive and not with regards to housing." And it's unsure there are some of those families that are dealing with that tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you. We will try to take this up June 8th. Libby wants to add a few things. Anyway, questions? Danielle's proposals and whatnot via email to us, and the clerk would be good. Thank you.
We'll prepare a more complete report for the June 8th meeting, and we have started on a form of an action plan. We were contacted by Steve Carter last week, and we'll be meeting with the City of Champagne hopefully later this week to talk about coordination, keeping a list of available sites. There was a question about apartment versus hotel or motel use, and that is something we consider very distinct in Urbana and would have considered the Gateway Studios an apartment use, and that would have provided hopefully some better protections. And we do monitor through mental registration, systematic inspections, and inspections of all of our hotels, when a hotel is becoming more like an apartment use, and this might be one of the reasons for doing that. Also, I would note that last year, in our social service process, we did set aside some emergency relocation funds, and we have not had to use those thankfully in this last year, but those funds should still be there. So we have beginnings of a plan, and we'll certainly, certainly take a note of what's happened in Champagne and Rantoul, and would like to improve our processes.
Okay. Brendan, then Diane.
Yeah, and Libby, while you're doing that, I really appreciate that. Taking timely action and having conversations with Champagne is really important. If, when you come back on June 8th, if you could also bring what information you know about sort of the legal remedy options, you know, what is possible for us to collect from the landlord of Gateway Studios if we have to pay out of our relocation fund? What are the different options for the method by which we go to court to eventually try to get that money back from the landlord who took that money from the residents but never paid it to Amron? That would really be appreciated.
Diane?
Libby, how do you know when a hotel has progressed from being a hotel to more like an apartment building? Do they know, do you require notification or?
We would treat it like any other zoning use determination. We would visit the site, look at the proportion, the preponderance of the uses, site visit, interviews. We know there's some extended care hotels, but there's a point at which it crosses the line and becomes an apartment. So that would be a zoning and a building determination, and I think we have all the tools we need to make that determination.
One other thing that concerned me was with, for example, with Woodstone in East Urbana, when there were so many vacancies, there was sort of a tipping point where it just went downhill really fast. So one of the things I think we should also be looking at in the rental registration ordinance maybe is requiring notification when we have a certain percentage of units that are vacant over a certain period of time. So just to...
We visit our larger apartments very regularly, police, community development, housing inspectors, and I think we have a pretty good handle on when we start detecting problems. Oftentimes, you might get more police calls or more complaints from neighbors. So I think the systematic inspections help us, but we also hear about when these problems are developing, and we have, we do have an interdepartmental problem property team that's very active. Our neighborhood safety, Mayor's Neighborhood Safety Task Force also keeps abreast of these. So that is an indicator and something we're concerned with, softening of the economy and out-of-area owners, for example. It's something that we watch very carefully.
Yeah, but I think Diane raises an interesting point, which is an even earlier indicator than maybe than some of these other issues. And it might be, you know, a very early warning sign, and so it might be worth looking at a little more, so. So hopefully, we'll be able to take this up June 8th. Is that, oh, Dennis?
Yeah. I just have another question, too, and I don't know, Libby, if you can comment on this one, but do we have a sense of the available affordable housing that's available in our community right now to handle similar problems or some of the outflow from these housing areas?
This is something we hope to get together with Champagne and begin to get a list of places people can go. There's not a census currently that I'm aware of. We can contact the CIAA, Central Illinois Apartments Association, and try to gather some facts on current vacancy. I know that some years ago, there was always a crunch. Now, I think there's more vacant units, so hopefully, we can get some numbers on that. We have had to deal with emergency situations in the past from time to time. We had people coming into town from Katrina, so we had to quickly mobilize many different agencies and find vacancies quickly. We have had fires, unsafe buildings. We've had events of that nature occur where we've had to quickly find people places to live.
Libby, and to extend that, do we have any regional approach to this? I mean, when Katrina's a really good example, and maybe that's something to go back and think about, you know, the countywide or multi-countywide way to approach, say, a large, a large event that results in a number of people being, you know, being homeless for a while? I mean, if you had a tornado strike in a part of the community?
Regional. It's more county. I think it's more countywide. I don't think it was very regional.
You had a countywide response, then?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. There's groups of professionals that meet regularly that tap into social service providers, housing providers, and we very quickly, for Katrina, got those groups together and were able to process people. So I think we have very good networks.
Okay. Robert?
If you knew the magnitude you were dealing with, let's say, within the next week or so, you could probably respond to it very quickly?
Yes, as you see what Champagne had to do calling around and, you know, just tapping into resources. The tenant union's always a great resource. So I think that we've been able to do that in the past, but I think pre-planning would be very wise, and I think we can do more of that.
Thanks. Okay. Anyone else from the public wish to address the city council? Okay. Seeing none, I have a proclamation from the mayor of the City of Urbana. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works, systems, and programs such as waters, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as the planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works representatives, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And I, now therefore, I laural on pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 to 23, 2009, as National Public Works Week in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issue involved in providing public work services and to recognize the contributions which public works representatives make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not only this week, but throughout the year. And Bill Gray is here to take this as our Director of Public Works. Thank you. Any other council members? Okay, moving along then. We have one item under Old Business Ordinance Number 2009-03024, and I know there's a slight title change, and I don't have the final version in front of me. Does anybody have a written version? I know it's on computer. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the City of Urbana Code of Ordinances authorizing the charging of costs of certain fire and rescue services. The actual title is now an ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the City of Urbana Code of Ordinances to authorize the City of Urbana to charge non-residents, non-residents for calls for fire rescue services on Urbana streets and highways. Questions? Additions from?
Basically, I made the change that was previously discussed, which was to change the definition of non-residence. Essentially said that a non-resident is someone who does not own or rent a residence in the county of Champagne, Illinois for a minimum period of at least six months out of the last 12 calendar months prior to the date of services. So that change has gone from Champagne, Urbana to the entire of Champagne County.
Diane?
In general, I support the intent of this ordinance, but as I emailed you earlier today, I had a question about the definition of non-resident. And by restricting it to someone who doesn't own or rent a residence, I think it excludes a lot of people in the community, for example, people who have parents living with them or relatives or friends or that sort of thing. So I wondered, is there another way to define non-resident that's more inclusive of the people who actually live here?
Yes, is the short answer. It can, I can define it any way, you know, to meet whatever the will of the council is. I guess the council just have to tell me who does they want to include and who they doesn't want to include. This is not, you know, I understand your question. It's really kind of not a legal issue. It's sort of a policy issue. Who does this, you know, government body want to pay and who do they not want to pay? And whatever that definition is, that's the definition I'll include. You know, I just have the same concern that I shared in response to your email, is that, you know, if you start excluding too many people, we've already excluded now anybody that lives in Champagne County. If you start excluding too many people, then, you know, it's kind of the ordinance rather than the rule. You know, you're not going to really have anybody reimbursing the city. But it's a policy decision, not a legal. That's just my opinion.
Brendan, then Dennis.
Ron, does the current definition, the wording and the way it's written, include people who live in dorms? They, I don't know if they're technically renting, or if I live in Orchard Downs, I guess they do call it rent. But if I live in Florida Avenue Residence Halls, I don't know if they call it a rent. It's really part of my bill on my tuition.
Well, it's not a bill on your tuition. You pay room and board. I consider it to be renting.
Okay.
You know, I feel if you live here in the community, you're domiciling in Champagne, Urbana, or rather, the county now, but specifically Champagne, Urbana for nine months out of the year. So I consider it paying rent. Now, whether others would, you know, I don't know, but yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah. Diane, I just wanted to hear your definition one more time. The question you brought up was the whether it covered people who were living in the county but not homeowners?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which covers rentals, I would basically.
Well, I guess I was thinking, if I had my parents living with me, they're not paying rent. They're not, they don't own a home, but they're still permanent residents here. But this is a very narrow definition. So how, how do you include the people who are actually living here?
If I could add, how about the words own, rent, or live in a residence in the county of Champagne?
Can you do that?
Well, I wondered, how do you determine from the census? The Census Bureau determines who lives here, and that's what our population is based on. So is that a legal definition?
I believe how the census determines it is, they literally go door-to-door and ask who lives in your household, you know, how many people, and so on and so forth. So I don't think there's any other independent method for us to determine who would live there.
I think the way you could do it is say, "Own, rent, or otherwise live in a residence in the county of Champagne."
Okay, I'm amenable to that. So I'd make a motion that the wording be changed and include, "Or live in a residence located in Champagne County."
Okay. There's a, let's see, do we have, we don't have a motion on the floor, so you can, you're moving the ordinance with this amendment.
Well, I'm, yes, I'll say that.
Okay. That makes it easier. Okay. So we've moved the ordinance with this amendment. Is there any other discussion on this, on this item?
I just think being more inclusive is smart, and, you know, it serves the people of our community.
It makes it more sound like the census thing. Yeah. Ron?
Just a quick question. So we're going to make that change, and then this is going to come to the next council, little council meeting, or?
Yeah.
Do you want me to bring that to the committee?
No, this is, this is doable right now.
Okay.
I mean, that's, we have a motion. We have a, we have a, we have an ordinance that's been amended on the floor, and if people are amenable to voting on it, well, we could. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmembers Bowersox?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Prochim Smite?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is reports of standing committees, Committee of the Whole, Brendan Bowersox.
Okay. The Committee of the Whole met last Monday night, May 11th, and forwarded a number of items to council, and forwarded them all with an approval that we recommend them, with a recommendation that we approved them, the other way around. The first of these is Ordinance 2009-05-050. This is one of the ones with the corrected number. This is an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, namely Colorado Avenue. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Then moved by Brendan, second by Robert Lewis. Discussion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmembers Bowersox?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Prochim Smite?
Yes.
Next, we have Ordinance 2009-05-051. This is an ordinance approving the CU Solid Waste Disposal Systems annual budget for FY 09-10. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Moved by Brendan, second by Robert. Discussion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmembers Bowersox?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Roberts? Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Prochim Smythe?
Yes.
Next, we have Ordinance 2009-05-047, an ordinance repealing Ordinance 2003-03024, and approving and authorizing the sale of certain real estate. This is 1107 North Gregory Street and 1109 North Gregory Street to the Homestead Corporation of Champaign, Urbana. For the committee, I move approval.
Second. Moved by Brendan, second by Robert Lewis. Discussion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmembers Bowersox?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Prochim Smythe?
Yes.
Next, we have two resolutions that we sent together in omnibus fashion, and we could vote on them here that way as well. Those are Resolution 2009-05-019R and 020R. These are resolutions certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium for this fiscal year 2009-2010. The first for Homestead Corporation of Champaign, Urbana, and the second for Ecological Construction Laboratory. And for the committee, I move approval.
I second them.
Moved by Brendan, second by Dennis Roberts. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These resolutions pass.
And finally tonight, Ordinance 2009-05-048. This is an ordinance approving an agreement with Champaign County for the placement of a newspaper rack located at 101 East Main Street at the county courthouse site. For the committee, I move approval.
Second. Moved by Brendan, second by Robert Lewis. Is there a discussion? Diane?
I would like to start off by saying I do support the Public Arts Commission and the idea of streetscape art, and I realize this project has been in the works for almost two years, and a lot of people have put a great deal of my time and thought into it. However, as I mentioned last week, I still have really serious concerns about the current need for this project, the cost, and the location. Since this was first approved a couple of years ago, there's been an economic downturn, and the newspaper industry has actually changed quite a bit. But my main concern is with the size, the scale, the cost of this project in relation to the need. It's, as designed, it's a 16-foot long by eight and a half feet tall structure, and 16 feet is about from the staff sign on that side over to this here. And it's a, the actual newspaper dispensing rack is 12 feet wide by about four feet tall, dark brown box, and basically surrounded, framed in glass. And I just have, I'm not sure how I can justify a $15,000 newspaper stand, and I also have concerns about the location on the northeast side of the courthouse as far as the traffic that will be there. So, as I said, I fully support the Public Arts Commission and the intent of functional art, I just have a problem with this particular project. And I just saw it for the first time about a week and a half ago, which means I probably am having the same reaction that a lot of the public is going to have when they learn about it, and that might be instructive, too. But anyway, those are my concerns.
Quick question for staff on this. Was it 10,000 or 15? I thought it was 10. I don't have that.
It's actually, the budgeted amount for fabrication of the piece is 15. That does not include compensation for the artist. That is above and beyond that 15, and that is an agreement that we'll be bringing to you next week.
And this comes from this coming year's budget, or is this money that was in the budget from last year for public arts?
There is, there's been a carryover for a few years of $5,000 a year for three years related to public art, and that's where the 15 is. And then, we've also identified a streetscape line item in the TIF budget that will bear the cost of the artist's compensation. So it's being paid for out of TIF funds, and there is a identified streetscape line item out of which this money will come.
So both pieces are out of TIF, then?
Yes, both the fabrication and the artist's compensation, but the, there's been a rollover of 5,000 a year for the fabrication of the piece.
Three years savings for this side, okay.
Correct.
So I think that's an important point that people need to take into account.
Correct. There will not be any general fund impact. This will all be out of, most likely, TIF, too.
Dennis?
I guess, I'm not as, I guess I'm probably more likely to just allow the first art event and project, you know, evolve and maybe, you know, become established. It's been in the works for a long time. Yeah, it's interesting that it became focused on the newspaper rack, and the newspaper industry's going through change. You know, if it were, you know, relating to cars, we're having a change in, you know, automobile traffic, too, same thing. We're going to be experiencing a lot of different changes in our community. The part that's not resolved is the artist's compensation, and I'm kind of wondering how we can proceed with saying that we're kind of okay with the project if we don't know if the artist is actually on board with the project himself. They seem to be kind of very much integrated, so I'm wondering if we should wait to find out what the result is of the artist's solution. I'm having a question on that.
The artist is fully supportive, he's frustrated in how much time it's taken in working through the county process. The artist is ready to go, we met with him today to discuss finalizing the contract. It will be in your committee packet, or it will be in your committee packet for next week, the 26th. So the artist is ready to go, the city is ready to go, and you will have the artist agreement next week.
Brendan?
And I guess maybe just to further answer Dennis's question and make sure I understand, too, this agreement with the county costs us nothing. If for some reason the artist decided he wouldn't want to go through with the project, or we decided that, we can just stop right there, there's no commitments in here with the county that, you know, that we'd be bound to, no costs for us, right?
Correct. The agreement with the county is just to set the stage for the piece. If we couldn't work out an agreement with the artist, if we determine that the piece just couldn't be built, there's no obligation related to the county agreement.
Dennis?
So we might then find for logistic reasons that the project was not possible, but we would have basically, we would end up obviously having a kind of a kill fee, or we'd be paying the artist for his planning and his time and his expenses incurred so far. Is that correct? So we would still be paying the artist?
Well, I would imagine if we enter into an agreement with the artist, then the project is a go. Now, there, we have to identify materials for the piece, we have to identify, we've already identified a location, but there's still some work to be done and fabrication to be done. But if we enter into an agreement with the artist, then it's my, it's my feeling that the project is moving forward, because we've engaged the artist to do the piece at that point.
So really, what we've got before us is simply an agreement with the county. So I guess I would like to add one thing, you know, several of us will be coming to present a report to the council from our visit to Portland that we made a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that we all noted as we walked around was the, was how public art of various kinds throughout the community really added to the ambiance of making it a walkable, bikeable community. It was really nice to see everywhere, you know, there's lots of examples of public art of various expenses from, you know, low-budget community school projects through very elaborate pieces in different locations in downtown, around the convention center, or in downtown along the river, and so on. It was a whole mix, you know, very broad range, but it really did add to the ambiance. And, you know, in a community where a lot of people are walking, and you've got 18,000 bikes a day crossing the river, you know, things are happening there, and so I was very impressed with that, and, you know, it was not something I've really noticed before. So I think adding, you know, we've got a streetscape in downtown, downtown Urbana, you know, Champaign has copied it at different points, we've gone back and forth on concepts between our communities. We have a large investment in the streetscape in downtown Urbana, and we wanted to expand it. It strikes me that this is a step forward in that direction, so I'm going to support Anyone else with clerk please call a roll?
Councilmembers Bowersox?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Marlin?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Prochim Smythe?
Yes. That passes for one.
Reports of special committees. Robert Myers?
I'm sorry, are you at reports of special committees, or do you want to do?
Special committees or officers, whichever, whichever one you're representing.
Well, I have the presentation under New Business.
Okay, are there any reports of officers? Oh, Bill Gray has something, sorry.
Some of you may have caught the press release, but Sunday, we had a group of eight public works employees along with five other agencies mobilize as part of the first-time-ever response to our newly-formed Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network, and the call for help was from Southern Illinois, who had, two weeks ago now, had 100 mile an hour plus winds, and they're in the midst of cleanup and debris removal activities. So I emailed the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, called IPW-MAN, and six communities rose to the occasion, including Champaign and us, and four other communities, and we mobilized at Champaign Public Works Sunday morning, and left kind of as a one-large convoy of 30-plus vehicles down there. So this week, we'll be minus a few people in public works. The weather sounds like it's going to be great, but anyway, this is really good news for the public works agencies and industry, and it's very similar to what MABUS did many years ago, and ELEUS has done more recently. So Public Works is now part of a mutual aid network team to help others in need. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, congratulations, Bill, because I know you had a lot to do with putting it together. We'll look forward to hearing how it went, so. I do have a quick question for you. How did we come through all the rain that we've had here locally?
Well, I could give you a quick report via email or whatever, but very quickly, Wednesday was a little harder for us than Friday night, both events. What hurts, gives us most fits, is a very intense rain, and I'm talking, I think Friday, we probably, you know, had about an inch in a very short period of time, and Wednesday was about an inch and a four tenths or so in a 20, 30-minute time. And our storm service is a five-year design, that sort of intensity just exceeds five years. We have a lot of pounding and flooding. Now, it goes away maybe in 20, 30 minutes, but for those peak periods, Washington Street by Glover, we closed for a little bit, Vine Street Underpass was closed for a little bit. The Lincoln Avenue closure at Church Street was actually a construction-related, I'll call it a faux pas, but it was sod, it was recently sod, and there was so much rain and water, floated the sod off the parkway into the street and plogged the inlet. So it's kind of a weird, that usually doesn't happen, but anyway, East Main Street, we had a lot of water there, you had to ride the center of the streets, the situation. I would say as far as calls for basement flooding, I want to think we had maybe a half dozen at most. We had a few manholes surcharging. We think it might be some blockage, we're going to look into that, in the country square and neighborhood area. So to answer your question, I think all in all, it wasn't bad, but I'm anxious to get our Vine Street project going here, and I think that's going to help minimize that situation.
Yeah, I, my backyard measurements said we had 2.8 total on Wednesday, so, yeah, and then followed by another inch, plus another half an inch after, between Friday night and Saturday morning was another half an inch, so it was quite a bit of rain.
But we were busy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so next up is New Business, Robert, sorry. Next up is New Business Ordinance Number 2009-05-053, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, Illinois, amending Article 9 of the Comprehensive Sign Regulations. This is Plan Case Number 2104-T-09.
Hi, everyone, I'm Robert Myers with the Planning Division. What I have for you tonight is a presentation on proposed changes to the sign code. This was reviewed recently at the Urbana Plan Commission, and I know your time is valuable, so I'm going to work through this fairly quickly, but for this topic, pictures help. So I have an illustrate, presentation with illustrations. This should come up, I believe, on your screens before you. Can you see that there? And then also on screen here. What we're proposing to do, this is an application by the zoning administrator to revise the Urbana sign code, and overall, we're proposing to strengthen the Purpose and Severability section to make sure we're on strong legal footing, to reduce the maximum freestanding sign height, allow small signs to encroach in the front yard setback to a certain extent, to deal with wall signs for regular structures, as well as institutional and owning signs, and then also strengthen electronic signage requirements. In terms of the Purpose and Severability section, we want to reflect standards which have withstood legal challenges, and we also want to make sure that there's a severability section that says essentially if a court strikes down a certain phrase, or section, or sentence of your sign code, that doesn't invalidate your entire sign code. This unfortunately has been a tactic of sometimes in some communities, but it's, in fact, it's increased in occurrence where the sign company wanting the municipality to change their ordinance, they'll search in every nook and cranny of the sign code, find something that's unconstitutional, and then ask for, to negotiate on changes for the sign code. And obviously, we want our sign code to be perfectly fair and neutral, but we also want it, and we also want it to withstand, at the same time, we want it to withstand legal challenge. We also are suggesting to reduce the maximum height for freestanding signs. Currently, freestanding signs can be between 25 and 35 feet tall, depending on how far the setback from the property line. We're proposing to change that to a maximum of eight feet to 16 feet tall, depending on the setback. And this does not include signs oriented towards the interstate. That's really a different category of signage. A short sign like that is just not going to be effective with interstate traffic. For the sign mounting height, the sign industry itself, they have certain standards for the maximum safe mounting height and the minimum effective mounting height, but in the middle, we have this optimal sign mounting height, and four different sign industry recommendations. They have four different publications, they have four different recommendations, but most of them base it on speed. How fast is the person moving by that sign? At 30 miles an hour, the recommendations of the sign industry itself recommends a maximum, or a, excuse me, an optimal sign mounting height of between 16 feet and 35 feet. So there's a lot of latitude even within sign company recommendations on how, what's the optimal height to mount signs. There is an important concept in there, though, and that is that signs that are viewed at greater speed typically need to be larger, and they need to be melted higher, that's generally speaking. This graph shows, this illustration shows graphically what we're proposing with our signed ordinance, and this is the scale. So you'll see on the top illustration, the current maximum sign height, and then it shows, on the bottom, it shows distance from the front, from the front yard property line, and then it shows the height as well. And then the illustration on the bottom is also to the same scale, and in terms of setbacks as well. So this shows graphically what we propose through this ordinance. What's currently allowed, I'll go through these quickly, but this will give you a sense of what do we mean by 25 feet tall. Schnucks at Urbana Crossing, 25 feet tall, currently allowed. The Shell sign in North Cunningham Avenue, 25 feet tall, currently allowed. 25 feet tall South Gate Plaza sign, that's currently allowed in terms of its height. And also Farm and Fleet, 35 feet tall, that's currently And also Farm and Fleet, 35 feet tall, that's currently allowed as well. What we're suggesting as a maximum height is 16 feet tall. This is an existing sign on South Phila Road. This gives you a sense of how tall we're talking about, 16 feet. And that, again, that's outside the front yard setbacks. Currently, no signs are allowed within the required front yard setback, but we're proposing to tweak that so that low signs that are truly low would be allowed to encroach as close as eight feet to the front property line. What is, the reasoning for that in part is there's a field of vision when you're a driver and you're looking straight ahead down the road. Typically, you can see 10%, at a 10% angle on each side of you as you're looking down the roadway. That means if you interpret this graph, essentially at 60 feet away ahead of you, you can detect a sign setback up to 11 feet from away. And at 240 feet ahead of something, you can detect a sign setback as far as 42 feet. And that's your, kind of your cone of vision for, for a typical driver. Those, those changes depending upon certain conditions such as the, some drivers have a slightly different cone of vision, but that's typical. So what does that mean? What it means is in order to be detectable at these shorter distances, it would be beneficial to be able to, as an option, to be able to have signs a little bit closer to the street, but we're suggesting not too close. When I say short sign or low sign, this is what I'm talking about, a sign of less than eight feet tall. This example is on North Cunningham and 6.7 feet tall roughly. But this is the type of sign that could be allowed to encroach as, as close as eight feet to the front property line. This is another sign that could be encroached under this proposed ordinance, on South Phila Road. Although this is in Champaign, I think it provides a good example. It's an attractive sign that's less than eight feet tall and it's monument type and is attractive. And then here in Urbana, the Meyer sign is less than eight feet tall. Now, this brings up an important point. If you have low signs, should they be monument signs? Should they be required to be monument signs or could they be pole signs? This issue was reviewed by the Plan Commission. In fact, city staff have proposed that new freestanding signs should be monument signs. The Plan Commission reviewed that and felt like, they reviewed the entire ordinance and they agreed with it, but they felt like, and I'll give you a reason why here in a second. They felt like that there should be some flexibility to do either monument sign or a pole sign, but they liked the idea of reducing the height. They felt like that monument signs are not necessarily synonymous with good design. They felt like that you could have monument signs or pole signs that are attractive or not so attractive. They didn't feel like that the monument sign again was synonymous. But what do we mean by monument sign? Carter's Furniture sign is a monument sign. The Five Points Commerce sign is a monument sign technically, although it's taller. And then a pole type sign, and again, some of these you might judge that are attractive, other ones you might find that need help in terms of their design or they could be better in terms of the design. This is an existing pole sign, a mobile on North Lincoln Avenue. And some of these are attractive because of the setting, the landscaping, et cetera. This is a PDR, a motive sign that's less than 16 feet tall in North Cunningham. Or you have a Perkins sign, which I would consider as a very attractive personally, pole sign that's located in Urbana on University Avenue. And again, part of it's the setting because of the landscaping, part of it's the fact that it's in scale with the building. Part of it's the fact that the design really coordinates with the building very, very well. Monument signs, there's some drawbacks and some pluses to monument signs. Monument signs work better with lower traffic volumes and speeds and non-interstate oriented signs and also areas with wider lot widths. In other words, if you have an area with narrow lots and you get monument sign right after the other, one after the other, it doesn't necessarily work as well. There's a greater chance, also with monument signs, there's a greater chance of having signs blocked from vision. Based on scientific research, the U.S. Sign Council strongly recommends a minimum height of seven feet to the bottom of the sign. I'll give you an example, reason why. Those signs that we've been seeing in these photographs, there's signs, the pictures were taken right up where it's, where it's your entire field of vision. But this photo that you see here, this is the real world. This is what you see out of your windshield. You'll see that there's all sorts of competing aspects of your field of view. You have, you have vehicles, you have stoplights and signs, you have pedestrian buildings, you have other signs, light poles. You also have landscaping. In this, in this example, let's see Schnucks Express, I'm trying to read it from this distance, food, fuel, and then it has the price. Well, you get closer and this is what you see. Well, there's another element here that's missing, at least that's blocked and you can't see. And this is the part that you don't see. It's on the other side, it's Starbucks Coffee. And the, the point of this is that by requiring that all signs be monument signs, you, you can run into the situation where you get some sign elements that are, that are blocked. This is actually a really good illustration from Champaign where this Arby's sign works very well going south. You can see it, it's not blocked, but cars coming north, it, the sign is totally blocked by the cars in front of it. Hickory River, a very attractive sign here in Urbana on North Cunningham Avenue. Again, part of it's the setting. I think the landscaping adds tremendously. Nice sign design, but if this sign were any lower, thank goodness it's not any lower because it, again, it would be blocked. So this, this is a good example of really seven feet toward the bottom is the minimum that they should be, in order to be visible. Monument signs again are most effective in driving environments which are visually less complex. This is a, this is not a complex driving environment. This sign works perfectly in this example here in Urbana. Quickly, a couple of other changes we're recommending. One is that has to do with institutional signage. In residential districts, we'd like to recommend that it remain a maximum of 25 square feet. But in institution and other zoning districts, 25 square feet honestly is not very large, especially where you have large buildings that are setback from the street quite a ways with a large parking lot in front. One example I give of a large institution is Vineyard Church. They've really had, they've really been struggling with how to provide wall signage on that building that people can see from the roadway from Lincoln Avenue. Another aspect that we'd like to suggest changing, and in fact, the Plan Commission does recommend changing, is the current standard of a B3 zoning district. We'd like to maintain the 10% wall area maximum rule, but instead of not exceeding 350 square feet, we're, we're recommending, the Plan Commission recommends to bump up that cap to 500 square feet. The reason is we continue to run into an issue with large buildings. Example, Farm and Fleet, Walmart, Schnucks, we would have run into that problem with Meyer. Although in this case, we had an annexation agreement with them that allowed a 640 square foot wall sign. But just to give you an example, that Meyer sign on the building is 640 square feet. Now, right now, they can only have 350 square feet total for all of their signs. Now, what, what do you do in cases where it's not just Meyer, but it's bakery, you know, oil change, the Bank Express and those sorts of things? And you can have a total 350 square feet. Most of the time that works fine, but in cases with large buildings, it really starts to break down. In terms of our electronic display, we'd like to, we want to strengthen our ordinance. The best way to do that is to update the definitions to address current and future electronic technologies. Our sign ordinance now, it really refers to electronic signage as electronic message boards. That's a particular type of technology, you know, type of electronic sign. It's kind of going out actually, so it's, it's, it's reached its prime and there's still a lot of them, but it's not necessarily the future. Thank you. Thanks very much. We don't want to weaken our ordinance in any way, but we want to anticipate by making sure our definitions capture those new types of signage and, and make sure we can regulate those. One change we are suggesting is to allow color in, in electronic signage. We do find that color is a critical aspect of effective sign communication and there also is something called the Federal Lanham Act, which prohibits requirements to alter trademarks, including trademark colors. This comes from a federal court case out of Arizona, actually. The city of Tempe, Arizona, they want a desert, they want a Subway shop, sandwich shop to change their colors to conform to a standard color code. I think they, maybe they had a palette of desert colors that they wanted all signage to incorporate. And actually, color is a really critical aspect of signage. We believe if you want signs to be small yet effective, that color, shape, logos, et cetera, is really a critical aspect. So we'd like to be able to have electronic signage to reflect that. Imagine for instance, if Subway, all of this were, let's just say black or all of it were white or whatever color you want to choose, pink. It would not be nearly as recognizable. The same thing with Dunkin' Donuts. The colors there are really integral to communicating the image quickly and effectively. We're not proposing to allow movement. In fact, we're strengthening that section. Movement or the optical illusion of movement of any type of any technology would remain prohibited. We're not proposing to change the three minimum for image changes and billboards, electronic billboards will remain prohibited. And I'm, with that, the only other comment I'd like to make is again, the Plan Commission has reviewed this and they recommend unanimously for approval for this ordinance. And it doesn't, the ordinance before you does include the change that they requested, which is to not require monument signs, but to allow the flexibility. And actually, there's kind of a built-in incentive here. If you want to move signs closer to the street, you can, but they need to be truly short and that's a sort of incentive.
Brendan?
Well, thank you, Robert, and the whole team. This is really great. I support this concept. I, because we have some people absent tonight, I don't know whether we'll be able to take final action or whether it might make more sense to send it to another meeting for final approval, but thank you for all your energy.
Sure.
I have four items that I think may be simple questions or maybe things we'll want to go back and talk briefly about.
Right.
The first of my questions is about institutional signs, where the change is that we would say it's 25 square feet in residential zoning districts, but we would conform to the sign standards in other zoning districts. And my question for you about that one is what if there's an institutional district across the street from a residential district? And the picture you showed is actually an example. You showed the church at the northwest corner of, I guess, Race in Illinois, where there's a, there's an institutional use, but immediately to the southwest and to the southeast are residential uses. Have, have you at all thought about, especially for R1, R2, R3, keeping the limit at 25 if the building is facing a residential use? And is that a problem you see or, or not a problem? Did that come up at all?
We haven't dealt with that, we haven't dealt with that issue directly. I see your point. There's a correlation between the zoning district, normally there's a correlation between the zoning district and the travel speed. If you, if you map out the city and if you look at the travels, posted travel speeds, typically like B3 General Business District, that's the predominant zoning in areas where it's 35, 40, 45 miles per hour. You do find some exceptions to that, but generally speaking, the faster you're traveling, the larger the signage needs to be, to be detectable. In the case you're citing, it's really a very low speed area. So that might be an exception, but we have not dealt with that honestly in this, in this ordinance. We haven't provided an exception for institutional across the street from residential.
Okay, that's one, maybe I'll give some more thought to, or maybe other members could weigh on, in on it as well. I guess when, I do, I do continue to wonder, when there is institutional across from residential or you're kind of on a border street, do, do we want to let your limit be your district or do we want to keep you to the 25 feet as if you were in a residential district? So that's one that I'll give some more thought to too, and maybe we can find an easy solution for. The next of my questions has to do with the wall signs.
Right.
And the Meyer picture was a great example of where, obviously, wall signs can be much larger when they're setback from the street and when they're an appropriate proportion of wall area. So I like the concept. My one question in this is what about buildings that are closer to the street, even though they may be huge? And so I think of the Bucy Plaza building, which is set right up against Broadway, or Carl Hospital, which is set right up against university, the Stratford Building, Urbana Middle School even, I mean, buildings that are large and yet close to the street and in some cases even across from residential uses or things. Is it still appropriate to have signs up to 500 square feet in area in those cases? Or did you at all consider doing a gradation there as well where, well, if your, if your sign is 200 feet back from the street, then you can go up to our new limit of 500, but if your sign is closer to the street, maybe you have to stick with our old limit of 350 or something. Is, is that stair stepping something that you've heard of or other cities do or?
I can, I can imagine that some cities do it that way, yes. I don't know a good example necessarily, but that's, that's, can be easily done, I think. Although signs close to the street would still have to meet the 10%, so I think it would always be in proportion. It would always, it would, it can never be more than 10% of the wall area.
Right.
So in that, in that, with that limitation, it's always going to be proportionate. But I, I see your point about the, it can go up to 500 square feet if the building is setback because you really need that much additional signage in order to be detectable and visible.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, with Carl Hospital or something, because it's so close to the street, even though it is a large wall area, because it's so much closer, it, it doesn't need the higher limit to be detectable perhaps. Or if Meyer happened to build in front of the street and put their parking behind, would it still be appropriate to have a 640-foot sign facing in that case? Well, there's a church there and some residential uses across from the Meyer. Yeah, it may be illegible. It may be huge letters and as a pedestrian, you'd be, you know, you'd be taller than the bottom of the letter J or something, or shorter than the bottom of the letter J just walking by it. So, so that's, that's one that maybe is food for thought.
Okay.
My third question about the wall signs as well is you make the point that when they are parallel, or I'm sorry, perpendicular to the road, they do need to be larger to be equally conspicuous and readable. But we actually don't require, I think in the wording, that these larger wall signs be perpendicular. Or be parallel. So if there were a building that had a front to it that was, you know, jagged or something, or a part of the building that jutted out farther than another part of the building, such that it made sense to put a wall sign on the parts that were perpendicular, maybe they don't, in that case, the signs don't need to be as large to be conspicuous and readable perhaps. And I couldn't think of a building that did lots of that. I mean, even the city building has different, different parts of the building have a different setback, but.
There's a category for projecting signs. I think that's what you're, that's what it sounds like you're referring to.
I'm thinking of a wall sign but on a building where the building might have different sections of the building such that there's a wall of the building that's actually perpendicular. So if, you know, Vine Street goes this way, but if the building has a piece of the building that faces. that faces perpendicular to the street, you might decide, well, instead of putting the sign on the front of my store, I want to put it on the side of, you know, the side of my building.
Side of the building.
And in that case, the limit may not make sense, given the logic that signs should be larger when they're, when they are parallel, but don't need to be larger when they're perpendicular.
Okay.
And I don't know. I guess if I, if I don't think of, or if other people don't have any terrible examples of it, maybe it's fine. Maybe we don't have buildings like that or signs like that often, so it's not a loophole that would ever happen, but it seemed a little bit like a loophole.
Yeah. I, I would agree with you that I don't think we've discovered that to be a problem that I can recall.
Okay. That's good. Good. Then my last question is about the signs closer to the street, the idea of putting some signs within eight feet. And my question is, is actually sort of a traffic safety triangle visibility question. When we get a sign permit, do we have the ability, and even does, like Public Works have the ability, to review a sign permit for triangle visibility rules? If, if we're going to incentivize monument signs being closer to the street, I'm worried there are more cases like the Kohler Crossing, where we'll have signs really close to the street in a way that don't work with the geometrics and, and the visibility at the intersection. And we'll need the mechanism for Public Works or someone to review the sign permit and say, whoa, you know, that sign just can't work there. Or the county sign, that we had a monument sign at the county that we asked them to remove after they installed and they were nice enough to remove it. Do we need a mechanism to review and approve or veto certain signs, given that now we're incentivizing them being even closer to the street?
We have, I would suggest that we have what we need in place in order to review that, because at the intersections, we do have the site visibility triangle that we can always review for.
Okay. Perfect.
And we spoke with Public Works about, and they reviewed it internally, the idea of signs being as close as eight feet. Actually, we were leaning towards seven feet to the, to the right-of-way. Public Works reviewed it and thought that eight feet would be more appropriate, so we changed it to eight feet. But there is a way at intersections to review that.
Okay.
Doc, you go.
Oh, if...
Well, I wanted to interject there. Example of one that is legal but doesn't work is the Kohler Crossing one. You have to, now, you're now required to make, you basically have to, to be very careful that you stop. You can't be looking to your left to see if there's anything coming. You have to basically make a double stop now to first, to check two different places to your left for pedestrians, bikes, and, and vehicle traffic. And it was all forced by that sign. And I don't know if that sign is, is five feet from the sidewalk or what, but, you know, three feet further, if it's five feet from the sidewalk, then eight-foot setback would have applied in this case from the right-of-way and that would have been, that would have made it work. As far as I'm concerned, you know, if that's an example of something that would be allowed under this, then that's too close.
Okay.
So Brendan, keep going. Sorry.
Oh, the Kohler Crossing example? That is an apartment at Green and Kohler at the southwest corner. It's a beautiful building with stone and brick and a very tasteful addition to the MOR, but there's a sign out front that if you're driving north on Kohler and you come to the intersection at Green, you sort of have to stop twice. You have to stop behind the line and then creep forward to get enough visibility, depending on how tall your car is and, and other factors.
Question is your...
Yeah. My last item was just a little typo. I wanted to point out a tiny one that might help to get fixed on page, in one of the tables, so late in the document, on page 117, at least in the strike-through version, it's 117, table 9-2. Standards for wall signs is what it will now be called. The typo is at the very last text on the page, in the last paragraph in the right column, "In the B1 neighborhood business zoning district, no wall signs are permitted on walls immediately facing a residential use or zoning district and is," I think the word "is" should be struck, so it reads "and not separated by a right-of-way," rather than "and is not." And it, it may even be clearer to say "unless separated by a right-of-way," if I understand the logic.
Okay, we'll clarify that.
Okay. I just, by the time I got to the end of that phrase, I didn't understand whether you were requiring a double negative or what the rule was, but maybe "unless separated by a right-of-way" is the intent. Again, thank you all.
Robert, Lewis.
Appreciate you pointing out things like, helps us pin it up.
Did you also have questions, Dennis? Okay, well, Robert, then Dennis, then Diane, I think is how it was, or you guys can duke it out here.
I had one question, and I don't know if it's relevant or, or not, but in terms of looking at it from covering all the bases in, in structures, and I know we're, we're dealing with surface, surface signs and elevated signs, and we've never ran across a situation where, I've noticed in other communities where they'll have a plaza and the main building is underground. And how do we address something like that in, in our sign ordinance? Do they have unwritten criteria or? One of the ones that I, I'm familiar with is a, I think it's in Denver, Colorado, and it's a big Walmart, and you go out and park on the top and go underneath. So how do, you know, I know they got signage out there, but do we have anything to cover or something that would be a plaza underground? That's not, you know, you don't, how do you define the, the space that they're in?
We'd confer with the zoning administrator. There's, I think there's two keys to that. Depending on the type of sign and the zoning district, in some places, our ordinance refers to lot frontage, so that would be easy enough to figure out what's, how wide a lot is, lot is on the street. And then sometimes we refer to business frontage, and in that case, I don't know how you measure that. I guess you could, well, we have to work with the zoning administrator on that, but I guess you could find out how wide the building is underneath the ground, you know, something like that.
But do we have vehicles, I mean, I mean to...
A way to address it right now.
A way to address.
Depending on the circumstances and the type of sign in the zoning district, we might, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't think we, not necessarily across the board, but, and depending on circumstances, we might, though.
I doubt seriously we'll ever have something underground here with all the water we have.
Underground, business.
Anyway, but the possibility. I just, you know, if you're going to pass a litmus test as far as legal, then maybe that would be a possibility.
No, I have lived in communities where, you know, there's a whole layer of businesses that steps down, you know, there's...
Right, absolutely.
So, yeah, yeah, so. I don't know who's next, Diane or Dennis?
I had a comment and a question. One is, I'm really glad the Plan Commission recommended against requiring monument signs, because I do think it's important to give businesses flexibility. And two, there are instances where the pole sign is better than a monument sign, in my opinion, especially if we want nice landscaping to, to be around businesses, then, then a pole sign sometimes would be a better choice. The question is, when, when, and just from my own background information, when, when changes like this in, in the sign requirements are made, do you talk to the businesses or get input from the business community? At what point in the process do they weigh in?
In this case, we conferred with the sign companies. We sent copies of, of the proposed ordinance to all the sign companies that work in the area, and we asked them for any comments. We heard back from two sign companies. The first one, which had an interest in, they were recommending that we change our electronic signage to allow message changes every one second. And that was the, the first, that's, that was one of the, the main comments that this sign company had. Another, they don't, honestly, that company doesn't work very often in my experience in this community. They do sometimes. But another company that, that does work day in and day out in our community, American Dow, they actually, they said there was really nothing in the sign code that really bothered them, so to, so to speak. In fact, they found some aspects that were really beneficial. They would, if they had their druthers, they would rather not see the, the signs be shorter, but they said they could live with that. But other aspects they found were beneficial, other changes that they found beneficial.
Dennis?
Well, maybe just in a general comment, first of all, I really, I think it's very wise for us not to be making huge changes in the digital sign aspect of our ordinance right now. I have a, you know, I've talked about, you know, a kind of reluctance to allow quick message changing, you know, as a, as a right in the community, and I think holding the sign changing to three minutes is good. And I do have a concern about the proliferation of large electronic digital billboards in our area, and I'm pleased that we still are able to say that we don't prefer them here in this community. We have not accepted them at this point. Okay, now, I said that. I was wondering about Brendan's question about institutional signs that are on larger buildings, churches, or community centers or such, schools that are near residential. And what I'm wondering is, is there a, is there an aspect of the ordinance that has to do with whether the sign is lit or not? Whether it's lighted at night or whether it is internally lighted and these come on at night? If, if the sign were lit, it would have a greater impact at night, and it might be a reason to consider limiting maximum size on institutional signs near residential Because they would become, well, they would be on perhaps all night and could possibly be a more of a nuisance to neighbors whose homes are across the street from that signage.
Well, currently, in the signing code now, to give an example for apartment modification signs, those can be only externally lit in residential zoning districts. You can't have internal illumination under our current code. But your question, I think, was about institutions that are facing residential zoning districts, and should those be internally lit or not?
Yeah, yeah. Currently, is that prohibited, are there any prohibitions for them to be lit or not lit?
No.
So they could be?
Not currently.
They could be lit?
Yeah.
Okay. So that might be something that, if the sign were lit, if we were, if it was to be allowed to be lit, or if it's lit by, by light, by, by right, you might call it, it might be wise to limit the, those sizes in near neighborhood situations.
Right. I think tonight, one of the themes I'm hearing is about institutional signs in residential zoning districts. One thing we could do is go back and talk about some of these ideas and maybe come back at the next meeting with some suggestions.
And I was wondering then, yes, if we have these questions, and you've already been to the Planning Commission and had their recommendations, what kind of review is required for, you know, concerning our discussions? Are we past the Planning Commission's input at this point and we're just really talking publicly now as a city council?
Well, we, we held a public hearing at the Plan Commission, and they've made their recommendation to, to this body. That doesn't mean, though, that there can't be some changes to the ordinance. When we advertised the, the, the public hearing for the Plan Commission, we always say at the bottom of the public notice that the, the plan agenda item is subject to change during the process. So there can be some minor changes or adjustments, I think. If you were going in a direction that was totally different, or I think that it might be wise to go back to the, give some direction to Plan Commission and maybe go back, but it doesn't sound like you're looking at doing that. Looks like you're, sound like you're making little adjustments or tweaks that can be handled in the current notice procedures.
I have two items to build on comments from Diane and Brendan. In terms of the, you know, monument versus pole, clearly there are situations where a monument sign works better. Pole sign, you know, sort of depends on, you know, your landscaping and situation. So, so is there a way we can encourage a monument sign when it really is the most appropriate thing in that location? I mean, you gave a great picture of one. I mean, and to me, it seems like there's a situation where we'd always want a monument sign, but the situation where the, the gas station with the pole sign and the nice landscaping, that probably works better there than a monument sign would. And, and I can see other situations much like that, and I think that's what Diane, is that what you were sort of alluding to?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, but, but I can see that, you know, a, a pole sign would have been very out of place in the location where you showed the monument sign, and I would, I wouldn't want to see a pole sign there. So I don't know how you can, you know, you know, say in one say, okay, you know, you basically say, okay, you have to use a monument sign here, but in this kind of situation, it's monument or pole, and if you use monument, you get this kind of a beneficial, or you get, you know, these kinds of incentives. If you do pole, you have to do landscaping or whatever, you know. I, I, I don't know, you know, what kind of landscaping do we require with the pole signs, for example?
Right now, we have an actual incentive for monument signs such that if you're on a corner property and you get one freestanding sign for each frontage, doing this from memory, so if I have it exactly right. But if you combine the two signs, you get a little bit extra square footage allowance. If you combine the two signs as a monument sign, you get, there's a bonus essentially, a small bonus. So that's an incentive that's currently on the books in terms of signage. The other thing is that if you allow truly short signs, a little closer to the street to encroach a little bit more, that will be beneficial in some circumstances, because although the sign will be short and smaller, it will be more conspicuous. So there's kind of a trade-off there. But when you have it less than eight feet tall, you're, I, I think, it's pretty much going to be a monument sign. You're not going to have a sign that's no taller than eight feet to the top of the sign and on little poles about a foot tall. You're not going to get many examples of that. So in that case, that, I think, is an incentive to provide monument signage if it's closer to the street.
So what kind of, what kind of landscaping do we, do we require on pole signs? I mean, I mean, that, that, that gas station example was a really good one with really good, good landscaping. I mean, if that were required of all of our pole signs, and the pole signs weren't too long, too high, I can see how that would be, you know, lead to a far more, a far nicer environment.
We require right now any, I don't know the exact number, I apologize, the square footage, but any sign or billboard over a certain square footage, we require landscape area underneath the sign, and we'll review that landscaping as part of the, the sign permit. So it doesn't discriminate between billboards or, if it's a large sign or a large billboard, it's in the same category and we require that now.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying, then, is I might, I might be interested in seeing landscaping required of even smaller, shorter pole signs as, as part of what, you know, if we're going to, you know, because that does result in something that looks pretty good. That's, okay. And then my other question was, you know, one of the, one of the issues is a walkable community. You put buildings up on, you know, basically very close to the street and the parking behind. Clearly, we don't want to have a large sign in, in those kinds of situations. So I think what Brendan raises is probably an important issue, especially as we, we see more, we may see more developments that are sort of community-oriented, or, you know, walkable community-oriented. So we probably do need some, some, some relationship to distance from the street on, on how large a wall sign can be.
Okay.
So that leads us to where to, where, how to proceed on this. We are missing the mayor and two council members who haven't heard this, discussed it. I know this is something the mayor is very interested in, in moving forward on, but she probably would like to review it. So Brendan?
I guess if we send it to committee, then we'll have to have at least two more meetings about it. But if we send it to council, and as long as people are okay with it, we could have just one more conversation about it and pass it in two weeks at our June 1st council meeting. So I guess unless anybody objects or feels there's a better route, I'd be ready to make a motion to just send this to the June 1 council meeting, and I bet we'll have some better attendance then.
I guess part of it depends on how
I guess part of it depends on how quickly staff has answers, too. I mean, I mean, there might be, there might be a bill to do reports, some of these things next week, in a week, in a week, to get some of our answers and then also have it, you know, as expected, at committee and at council. Would be more my, my preference.
Committee and council?
Yeah, just plan to have it in both.
Well, we may need a little time to flesh out some of the concepts, but...
I mean, is there any rush on this, Libby, or...
My thought was, if it was a council meeting in two weeks, we could probably have a revised ordinance for you to review, along with some answers if it's for the packet that goes out Thursday, it'd be, it'd be a little difficult.
That's, that's all I'm thinking.
Yeah, well, sounds like, and, and of course, if you're not ready June 1st, well, we can then send it to committee, I suppose. Yeah, okay, Brendan, I think your first againsts were right.
Okay. So I'd move to send this to the June 1st council meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second from Brendan and Dennis. Is there any other discussion, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. This will go to council. For further, thank you very much, Robert.
Okay, thank you.
We have one last item before us. That's the mayoral appointment of Danny Otto to Plan Commission, which is a member short. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to appoint Danny Otto to the Planning Commission.
A move by Dennis, second by Diane. Discussion.
Excellent choice.
I agree completely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Danny Otto is a member of the Plan Commission. Any other, any other business before us? Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.